Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this business meeting of the State and City Council. It is Monday, October the 18th in 2021, and we need to start with a flag salute. If you'd join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ah. Under announcements this evening, are there any additions to the agenda? I don't believe there are. Alyssa? No? Okay.
No, Mayor.
Um, declarations of ex parte contact, conflicts of interest or bias, anything?
Wait. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not sure if we're going to have an opportunity to declare this later in the agenda, so I have talked to community members as well, including Brian Quigley and Casey Falconer, I believe is the last name, as well as just, I've read over some other stuff that I'm aware now that I cannot consider at this moment in any decision we make later.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I also have some other ex parte contacts I'll disclose later on when we reach that particular item on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, there are no appointments this evening. Is there any public comment? Here's an opportunity. Come up to the microphone and state your name and address, please, and have a couple of minutes. Okay. Is that, is that mic on?
Oh, thank you. Say it again. Dwayne Weaver, 226 Cedars Terrace Court in Staton. And I was here last week just commenting on, on the annexation about the traffic in the area, and I just wanted to, since then, my wife and I were, happened to be on the walk and had our closest call yet at the intersection of Third and Fern Ridge. And I just wanted to bring that, that particular issue up again. There are no painted crosswalk lines there. There's no flashing light. There's, there's nothing. We thought we were in the clear with one car stopping for us, going this direction, and another one that was at the stop sign turned and almost hit my wife. It was within probably eight to 10 inches. He was taking an opportunity, I guess, because that other car had stopped to make the turn. So I don't know what else to do but to appeal to the council here to do something about that intersection, to make it safer for, you know, we're, we're fit and can jump out of the way pretty well. The gentleman that was in the wheelchair that died obviously couldn't. And there are children that cross there because the school's just down the road, and it's just a matter of time before somebody else dies at that intersection. So I'm just appealing to, to you guys, and if, if I'm not appealing to the right group, if one of you could tell me who to speak to, I would gladly do that.
Well, thank you. And if you want a real excitement, get on one of those mobility scooters like I have to ride a lot. And I, I'm resigned to getting smacked someday.
Yeah. They don't have a turbo mode, do they?
Not yet, but someday.
Yeah.
Somebody will be on their phone and not paying attention.
Right.
They won't see me. Anyway, I'd apply to county, I'd offer those comments to the county commissioners. It's their road.
Oh, the Fern, the Fern Ridge portion?
Well, help me with that then, Dan. Lance, somebody?
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me?
I, I feel like we talked about this in another meeting at one point, and I think Lance might have spoken on it. I'm not sure that putting those crosswalks can sometimes actually make it more dangerous because the pedestrians then rely too much on that safety of it. And I, I can't remember what meeting we talked about it at, but...
It hasn't been too long ago. You're right, though.
Yeah.
Apparently, it's not a county road, so maybe we just, who to apply to?
I can give you a few words on that.
A few? If you would, please. Lance?
Thank you. So it is, on the Public Works Director, Lance Ludwig. It is not a county road. It is a city road. There was an accident on it a year, year and a half ago. The last I knew, I was working with the chief. We were waiting on an actual accident report to see exactly what the, the final outcome of that. I know it was a person in a wheelchair. We don't know, you know, what surrounded that. I have reached out to our transportation engineer, and there are several things that we can do, and we probably will do that within the next six months. We'll put something out there, either crosswalks, a beacon, or something like that, signage for sure. But I was waiting on the actual State of Oregon transportation report, accident report, to determine what, what caused that, and, and that's where we're at.
Okay. A year and a half later?
Well, I'm still waiting on it, so I don't know what to tell you. State moves slow. It's been a COVID year, so, you know, I, I don't know what to tell you other than that.
All right. Thank you. Okay. I'll quit referring Fern Ridge to a county road. I hope I will, anyway. Okay. Are there any other public comments at this time? There may be some later, but we've got that sorted out. All right. Let's see. Where are we? Comment. Consent agenda for October 11th of 2021, City Council minutes. Have you folks had a chance to review those? And could we have some action on those, please? Okay. Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have just a question about the public comment section of the annexation application. We got an email from Alyssa earlier about public comment and the hearing being closed. So I don't, it's on the agenda that we have public comments, so are we going to still allow public comment?
Mr. Fleishman, when he does his staff report, was going to review that statement that was in the email about that nothing can be considered for the annexation because the record and the hearing has been closed. So they can get up, but it's similar to what I passed on in that email, is it can't be considered.
But we can reopen. We, we do have the option to reopen.
Yeah, with a quorum of the council.
Okay.
Or majority, sorry.
So...
Okay, so we're still, we're still, um, trying to get this...
It looks like there, someone in the audience did have a question. I don't know if we, because we haven't moved on quite yet with the motion, if we can take another public comment?
Well, there's one out there.
Yes, there is.
I'll go with that one out there. It's out of the, what? The linear flow of our evening here. Is there another public comment out there at this time?
This is not going to be part of the agenda item. I will be like, yeah. Is that correct?
There is a section for public comment there, and we are going to honor that. It's just that it can't be considered as part of the record.
When do we do it now or do it at the agenda item sign?
Yeah, I had him, we're going to do it at that point.
And I had a note to recognize you, Brian, so...
Yeah.
Good enough. Okay. Some action on those council minutes from October 11th, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is Counsel Patty. My motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second?
Yes, Counsel, a second.
Okay. A motion and a second to approve the City Council minutes for October 11th as presented. Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, thank you. And to some of the business at hand this evening. No public hearings, so general business, state and family memorial pool rates, staff report. Suzanne?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Can you guys hear me?
Got it.
Come closer. How's that? Is that better?
Yes.
It's been a while since I've had to use the mic, so I have to like reorient myself and have, even though she told me I forgot that fast. So this evening, after we're bringing the pool rates back, after we had the work session and gone back in and done some more review and looking deeper at the memberships that are actually, actually utilized, and taking all of that data together, we have brought before you a brand new proposal for pool rates, pairing it to what was actually being used. There's a couple changes. You'll see that in the pool swimming rates, when we went back and looked at what was done in the past, there was actually different rates for different ages. And so what we decided to do was make it one rate and then have additional per child after that. So what that does is for a family, for example, that had one, three children and one in each age group, they'd be paying 105 with the old rates. With the new rates that are proposed, depending on if you pick option A or B, it's $50. If it's option A, 52. If it's option B, so it, it saves right around $50 than what the rates were prior, but then makes it more simpler for families. So, and then, and then making the rates down. So what you have is two options. Option A, we left the rates at what they were approved of last fiscal year, and only did the increase on the non-resident rates to get those with a bigger distance and more in line. And then option B, we did a 5% increase to the rates with the same swimming changes that we talked about, and you see that in your spreadsheet, and then left and kept the same percentage difference between non-resident and resident rates. So those are the two proposals before you with the changes. So if I have any questions, that's my staff report.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
Go ahead.
Susanna, the, under the private pool rentals, where it says "family," what is...
Private pool?
So it says pool rental, two guards. I don't know if that's a typo. It says two guards all the way down, and then it says "family."
What page are you looking at?
Are you looking at the resolution?
Are you looking at this?
I'm looking at page 12. Am I looking at the...
If there is a typo, that's probably my fault from...
Page 12, oh, one of...
Yeah.
Hold on.
Yeah. So I, that's a mistake on my part when I was drafting this.
Oh, okay.
It should be what's on, on here.
Yeah.
And...
Look at this.
Depending on what you guys decide tonight, you can have us modify and make those corrections.
Yeah, so the pool rentals are based on how many people they think will be attending for how many guards or if they want the slide. If they want the slide, we have to have three guards, and that's the hourly rate, and so that's why you, they have a variety of choices.
Thank you, Susanna.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned like $52. I don't, I didn't see a $52 option that I was looking at, so I wasn't able to follow along.
Oh, because if you were going to use the 5% in option two, it's 36.75 for the first child and 5.25 for the other two children. Oops, I did it too high.
Oh, for swimming lessons, got it.
Yes. I was just kind of comparing the difference from how before it was $25 for one age, 35 for the other age, and then 45 if they were older than six. So if you have three kids, you'd be paying that whole 105. This way, you're only paying the base rate of $35 or 36.75, and then it's just the additional child, regardless of what age or what swimming lesson they're in.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm following now. Thank you.
It's been a while since I've been in person, so I might have forgot how to talk. It's okay. I need my little box.
Mr. Mayor, Susanna, are we, so the parent talk, where it says "NA," are we just not changing those or are we not offering those?
No, we're still offering all the classes, but the rates are just going to be a flat $35.
Okay. Well, I'm talking about like the parent talk and the PERS lessons and the progressive?
Yes.
Okay.
They'll be the same...
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. I get you now. I got it.
See, pairing it down is good.
Yes. Um, I, I mean, not that I'm necessarily a proponent for people to be paying more money, but I also know that swimming lessons, teachers usually get paid more, and then you need more staff, and they're always full.
Correct.
So I don't, for you, I, I, I would agree with like a discount for multiple children, but I don't know if $5 additional is really enough for, because you still have to have a kid in the class, and you're still paying for that teacher, and you're still paying for that time, and I worry that that's not going to be enough if we're trying to sustain the pool, especially if that's something that is really popular.
Yeah, swimming lessons are very popular. So we tried to come up with something that seemed to be the middle ground from the work session and what council said, and still get something approved so we can move forward with the pool because they can't have a private lessons, we can't do anything because we only have daily rates available at this point. So we were just trying to find something that would seem to be workable, understanding that this is a business and that the levy alone does not support the pool, and we have to have rates to get us there. And then what we need to do is really watch it close this year and see what we need to do. I do know going forward, there's going to need to be a consistent increase to keep up with the CPI rate like everything else we do, but this is the middle ground, I guess you can say, is that I came up with for something to move forward, and so, and we can change whatever you like as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I appreciate the, the spirit of the discount. I'm, agree with Counsel President Ort that maybe, I, I was looking at like what is 20% off per additional child, and that's $28 even. So like maybe if there was a 20% discount per additional child, so it's still affordable if you have a bigger family, but you're still kind of getting that discount, but it's more than $5. Because I agree that these are really hot sought-after spots, and one or two families could kind of take up the whole class. And then there just wouldn't be that rate of return for the instructor's time, which could actually put us in the hole for that class. So that would be my proposal, is that we do like a 20% discount off of the swimming lesson price for any additional child instead of $5. And I'm totally open to what percentage that discount is, just, I think $5 might be a little bit too low.
Yeah, I'm in an agreement with Counsel Ort and Counselor Hook. It becomes a screaming deal. I was just going to say something around like 25 for every additional kid. I like round numbers. But it's, it seems like we're, we're, yeah, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to hurt us if, I mean, the classes are going to fill up fast, and it's going to hurt us if we don't get the, the revenue from those. There's lots of multi-child families, and I don't know if we're going to, that's going to cut it. So, in agreeance.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty. I would be amenable to this latest change. I will say, Susanna, terrific job trying to figure out what we all want here. Just, I mean, speaking from the cuff, like you did an excellent job. But yeah, $5 is pretty cheap for an additional child. So I would say, you know, 28, 25, it doesn't matter really, just as long as we try to recover as much money on this as possible. But ultimately, I think we all be wise to remember at this point, we are subsidizing this pool. So, I mean, no matter what we charge, we're still not going to recover the full rate of what we're spending on it. So that's all I had to add, but 28, 25, either one sounds good, whatever city staff would think is easiest, if 25 would be easier because it's a round number or the percentage that we mentioned earlier. What do you think, Susanna?
So I want to make sure I understand. So the scenario that I gave about the family with three children, all in each age group, so they would get a 25% discount off the $105, and we're going to use the, the rates that are here, or we're just going to, so I know where I'm pulling the discount. I just want to make sure I understand.
So they, if I understand it, they would get the discount, so the first swimmer would be 35, and the next two swimmers would be, if we went with the 25%, it would be the 20, or the 20%, excuse me, off of the 35. So the additional swimmers would be $28 each.
Okay.
So it'd be 35, 28, 28.
So they would be, they'd all be, all the children would be $35 each. It's just if they're all in one family, then they're getting the 25% discount for each kid.
Additional.
On the second child or the third. Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I like 25%. I like round numbers, too. As you know, I kind of rounded all this to quarters, dollars or quarters.
It was $25, right? Is that 20?
Oh, not a percent, 25.
It'd be a flat $25 for each additional child.
Oh, gotcha. I got you. Not a discount. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Counsel, I like the idea, because our community passed the levy, I like the idea of having no change to the residents this year and increasing the non-residents. That would be my preference for us to do. I think, like I said, I'd say thank you to them for passing it.
That would, that would be my preference as well.
Agreed.
As Counsel Patty, I guess I'm agreed too here, since this is how we're doing this.
I know we had some, Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Yeah, go ahead. Let's get something on the ground if we can.
Okay, well, I just had one more comment before we did that.
No, that's fine.
So I know that we had a lot of disagreements about the family rate, but I am wondering if that should be even slightly higher than what we have it right now. I understand what we had was way too high, but I'm just wondering if, because if you look at what we have for adults, and then even if you had, so if it was two adults and one child, what would that be, and then the discount? So I just want to know if you guys want to consider that at all, or if you're okay leaving it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think I see what she's meaning, because if you have one adult, it's 40, $45 per month, and then if you have one youth, that's an additional 20, so you're paying like $65 just for those two people. I don't know. I do like the $55, though, for this. But I see what you're saying, Counsel Ort.
Because if you had two adults and, and just one youth, you're talking $110. So it would obviously be the best idea to get the, the family rate.
But anyone can sign up for family, family rate, right? So you could be a family of two and still sign up for a family rate?
I, I changed the definition, so it's two adults and however many children, as long as they're all in the same household.
But let's say that...
Because before I had two and two, and the concern was if they had more than two kids. So this way, they just have to all live in the same household, they all have to be the same family.
So let's say that like Joe and Nancy are a couple, and they want to come in and get the family rate because alone, each of them would be $45 apiece. Could they sign up for the family rate?
They don't have a child, though, because it says, has to be two adult and at least a child to be a family.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Mr. Mayor?
That's the way I worded it. Hopefully that works.
This is Counsel Patty. This is just one individual counselor, but I really would like to see these rates implemented and see if that's a sought-after membership first before making changes to that. I totally see what you're saying, though. I understand. Again, I just want to see if that's a popular membership, and this is an issue where we're losing a tremendous amount of money on that, because I feel like if we continue to complicate this thing, we could be here all night. That's just my two cents.
There is a very small amount of family memberships that was even utilizing it. There was less than 100, so it was a very small number. The majority of the memberships were in the seniors, so even if you did leave it alone for now, and then look at that and see if the families change, we'll just, we'll keep it like we said, that they have to have a child, so it can't just be a husband and wife. That way, we can move forward and then see.
So I, I guess my, my problem here is that, you know, for a couple that they consider themselves a family, whether or not they can have kids, had a kid, don't have one anymore, theirs is $90 a month, but the family rate is $55 a month. I would propose that we just let people define what a family is for themselves, and if they want to sign up for the family rate when they're two people, why, why not? Why do there have to be kids involved in that? Otherwise, we need to adjust this rate a little bit, either the adult membership or something, because it doesn't make sense. I mean, hypothetically, you get a, a couple that comes to you and they lost a child, and they want a family rate. They, they were a family, so I, I just don't see charging them $90 when just having a child gets them down to 55, when there's actually only two people versus three plus.
I would be in agreeance with that. I think that it should be two adults and then any children. It, it like covers up two. It covers up to the two adults, obviously in a household, okay. In the same household, and then any children. I would like to suggest like a $75 rate for the family. And then that's all I have to say about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ben?
This is Counsel McDonald. I, I think we have to consider, you know, single parents with one kid also, which is, which the rate listed here, which would be perfect for, because if there's one adult and one child, they're getting a deal by getting, signing them, signing them both up for the membership. So I, I kind of think we should just leave it where it's at and change the criteria to two people from the same household, period, of any age.
A minimum of two.
Minimum of two, of any age, and leave the rate where it's at, and see where it goes.
I would agree with that. I think just up to two adults and children from the same household as the restriction. Everyone has to be from the same household.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve option one of the resolution number 1029, adopting the revised fees and changes for various city services as amended, which include changing the additional swimmer for swimming lessons to $25 for residents, and then...
The 20, the 35% for non-resident.
For the non-resident, and then changing the family monthly membership to a minimum, to a minimum of two people in the same household.
Okay. Okay. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Seconded. This is Counsel McDonald.
No increase in resident rates. Did I get that right, or did I get the wrong?
No, we got it right.
Page here, okay. Um, I've got a motion. Is there a second, please?
Yes, second from Counsel McDonald.
Thank you. Uh, Option One of rate increases, um, I thought for a moment, um, but it wouldn't sound right, that we might just put this item on the agenda every second or third meeting, and just play with it forever. But this is fine. This is better. Option One, no increase in resident rates, thirty-five increase to non-resident rates. A motion and a second to approve Option One, Resolution Number Ten Twenty-Nine, adopting revised fees and charges for various, no, I'm sorry, let's go back. A motion to approve Option One of Resolution Number Ten Twenty-Nine, revising, adopting revised fees and charges for various city services as amended. Changes noted.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd also like to, uh, put this on the agenda in six months to go over how the pool is doing.
On my quarterly updates, I plan to let you know how the pool's doing when I do the quarterly updates on the financials. That'll be part of it.
That will be perfect. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there any more discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to mention that we, I think in Option One, we also have to change the, the guard thing as well.
Yeah, that was, uh, I have that noted.
Okay, that can count as the amended, as amended?
Yeah, because we're, we're adopting Option One, which is this, and it'll get fixed in the final.
Awesome. And just for other discussion, um, I wanted to completely agree with Counsel Patty. Excellent job on coming back with, with this. It is exactly what, what I think the residents feel that they deserve after voting for a levy, and we definitely want them to continue voting for it in the future. Um, so thank you very much for the hard work that you did. I really appreciate it.
Good, good.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, I spoke with a community member Friday, um, who is a senior using the pool, and I, this is coming from, I totally understand staffing issues and whatnot, but the comment was just made that there's lots of people that would really love to use the pool earlier in the day, um, as exercise, and, um, I know that we have been focusing a lot on families, but our seniors are ones that use the pool for, um, exercise and mobility issues and whatnot, so that's, uh, something that we, we really need to make sure that we're honing in on, uh, that part of the community as well. But again, I understand it's a, it's a staffing issue, but I wanted to bring that to the attention, because she asked me to.
So we do have good news. We do have morning sessions right now, two days a week. We started it two weeks ago. And every two weeks, we're reevaluating our schedule and seeing where we are with staffing. So, uh, we've got two more new hires. We're just waiting on paperwork on one. And then we'll be having mornings Tuesday through Friday, as well as, uh, early afternoon before the swim teams get started. So that, so just watch closely in the next week. And then we now have two people that will be able to teach classes, because we haven't had anybody to teach classes yet. So hopefully in the next two weeks, you will see that get going as well. And then Saturdays have become a very positive time. Families are enjoying it. We pulled the basketball hoop out. The slide is running. I'm having Emily look for a volleyball net, so we can rotate volleyball and basketball for the kids and the families, and then get some more water toys, so they can have more diving games and stuff. And we're still keeping a lane up for the people who wanted to come in and exercise, and it's not interfering with the rest of the pool, because I had some people from the community reach out to me and say, I'm studying, I'm practicing for a throw, and I just need a lap, a lane, can I have a lane? Sure, I think we can make a lane just sitting there. It's big enough. So I spent a lot of time talking to the community and really working with them, and we keep adapting the schedule. They all know my mission is to make the whole community happy, not, you know, one population, but all. And so far, it's working pretty smooth, and I'm pretty pleased with, and everyone seems to be quite happy. I'm out at the pool on a weekly basis, checking in and just talking to who's out there, talking to the coaches, because man-errays are out there practicing now. So, um, just, we just, we're gonna keep changing that schedule every time we're getting more and seeing what we can do to adjust, and still leave room for parties, because we've had a lot of calls for private parties, because COVID, they don't wanna party with other people, so they're really waiting for the, the pool rates to get approved, so they can have their parties. So I've got two parties already on the books for this weekend, just waiting for tonight's approval. And then a couple families went ahead and like gave them a corner of the pool, so they could still have a little bit of a party. So I've tried to find the middle ground and tell, and had to charge them all daily rates, because I have to follow the rules, and so they were happy about that. So it's been very positive. They really like Emily. She's really out there and, and meeting the people, so it's been very good for the short time we've been open, just so you know. Just don't ask about the revenue, because I haven't looked at it yet.
Thank you, Susanna.
Ms. Hannah?
I just have one more follow-up.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you clarify, and I think this is, this is why I did not have an annual membership, uh, or a monthly membership prior, um, is because I didn't understand that classes, as well as like drop-in pool times, were included in the membership. So is that correct, that when you have classes, or lap swim, or open swim, it's all covered in the membership?
Enjoy it whenever you want. Swimming lessons are special. That is a true statement. Those have, those have rates of their own. And if you wanna private rent the pool, you're gonna have to follow the rates. But yes, that is true.
Thank you.
Other, other thoughts, questions under discussion? If not, uh, let's go to, to a decision here. Alyssa, would you pull the counsel, please?
Sure.
On that question of, of, um, approving Resolution Number Ten Twenty-Nine, adopting revised fees and charges for various city services as amended, and the changes noted. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Counsel Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Or?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And to another piece of business this evening, uh, annexation application, Jean Jones, thirteen six oh one Fern Ridge Road. It's an action item. Staff report. Mr. Fleishman, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The issue before you this evening is the second consideration of Ordinance Ten Forty-three. Last week, the council approved the first consideration of this ordinance, but it was not a unanimous vote. So therefore, the charter requires it to come back at a second meeting for a second consideration. I want to stress that you completed the public hearing last week. You closed the record on this case, and while there is public comment on the agenda following the staff report, you will be putting your decision at significant risk if you accept additional testimony, and/or if you consider any public comment that is presented to you after the record is closed. At the close of the hearing, or, or prior to the close of the hearing, during staff summary, uh, I recommended to you that the ordinance be adopted with modifications to reflect the testimony that was offered, uh, last week. The motion that was presented and approved by the council was to approve the ordinance as presented. I have checked in with the city attorney to confirm that you may this evening amend the ordinance, and it is, it is his and my recommendation that you do so. The draft of the ordinance that you have in your packet has four changes to it that are highlighted in yellow. They are additions to the findings of fact that reflect the testimony that was presented at last week's public hearing. You can find them on Pages Three, Five, Six, and Seven of Exhibit D, which is the council's findings of fact. Um, and they, again, they are just merely reflecting the testimony that was presented, and in some cases, uh, the response to that testimony, uh, on, on how the decision reflects that testimony, or does not reflect that testimony. Um, so with that, uh, the staff recommendation is to approve the second consideration of Ordinance Ten Forty-three as modified in the draft that you have in front of you. And I will answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions from the council? Go ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I would like to make a motion that we open the public hearing, so that we can hear the public comment, and consider it.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Let's try something else.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Dan, I, I just have a question. So we, we did not, our, our motion, or what we passed, was to, and was to annex and then give it a zoning of medium density. But what's highlighted here is all about high density, and questions about high density. I don't understand what... You need to break it down a little bit further for me. What are you, what are you telling us? What are you suggesting here?
Well, I, I am suggesting that your findings of fact need to reflect the testimony that was presented to you at the public hearing, and where appropriate, respond to it. Um, and that's what has changed in the draft of Ordinance Ten Forty-three that is in front of you now. The effect of the ordinance, in that you are annexing nineteen point one acres of land into the city and assigning medium-density zoning, does not change. That is in the body of the ordinance on Page Two of the ordinance itself. The highlighted paragraphs that have been added are in Exhibit D of the ordinance, which is your findings about the, the process, who the applicant is, where the property is, what the, the criteria of approval are, what the testimony, what, what the application said, what the staff said, what, what the reviewing agency said, and what the public said at the public hearings. And there was, there was previously in there remarks about what was said at the previous public hearings, but obviously, the draft that I wrote in advance of last week's public hearing could not include comments that were offered at last week's public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Counsel Patty.
Yes.
Dan, I have one succinct and simple question. Is the application for annexation in our packet from last week the only annexation submitted for application from this applicant? Or are there additional ones?
It is the only application that was submitted.
Okay. And then is the back of the page found in the land use file on the City of Staton's webpage also to be included with that application for annexation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions or thoughts here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead, Counsel.
Uh, so Dan, for clarification from our last meeting, when this application was, um, first submitted, and so I'm just asking for clarifications to make sure that I understand what is happening. So when this application for annexation was submitted and then given to the Planning Commission, it also had, um, uh, application for what they wanted to do with the property, for like a master, I'm not gonna say it right, for the master plan revision. Is that correct? Or you can, there were two applications that submitted by the, a developer at the same time. One was for annexation, one was basically what they wanted, their intentions of what they wanted to do with the property?
There were two applications submitted at the same time. One was an application for annexation. Our code says that if an application for annexation is not accompanied by a concurrent application for development, subdivision, or site plan approval, that the application for annexation must include a conceptual sketch of what the applicant has in mind. So the application for annexation that was submitted in October of two thousand and nineteen included a sketch plan of an RV park. The application was also accompanied by a concurrent application to amend the comprehensive plan map, because our comprehensive plan map designates this land as residential. And an RV park is only permitted in commercial zones. So the applicant, when he first came in, submitted an application for comprehensive plan amendment. And because he was asking for the comprehensive plan map to be amended from residential to commercial, he indicated that the desired zoning that he wanted applied to the property was interchange development, which allows RV parks and campgrounds. Following the Planning Commission's first public hearing in December of two thousand and nineteen, the applicant submitted a written request via email to withdraw the application for comprehensive plan amendment, and at that time indicated that he wanted a zone, a residential zone, applied to the property that would accommodate a mobile home park.
Okay.
And subsequent to that, prior to the Planning Commission's second public hearing, submitted a conceptual sketch plan of a possible mobile home park. Again, because our code requires that if there's not a development application, which has never been submitted for this property, that it, you need to have a, you need to give the city some idea of what you've got in mind. And the code goes on to say that once annexed, the development needs to be substantially in compliance with the conceptual plan. So it's not a site plan, but it's a, it's a sketch, it's an idea, and you can't come in saying, I wanna build a hundred single-family homes, and then submit a, get annexed, and then submit a development application for, for a hundred apartments. You need to be in substantial compliance with your, your sketch plan. So I did not require a subsequent annexation application to be submitted when they withdrew their concurrent comprehensive plan amendment, because there was a written statement from them saying, now that we're withdrawing our comprehensive plan amendment, here's the type of zoning we would like. And they did not ask for a specific zone, because there are, although there are two residential zones that would permit a mobile home park.
Okay, um, so I have two, two questions here. So... So even though this City of Staton requires that when someone wants to annex in property, they tell us, "Hey, this is what we want to do with it," we, as a city council, are not able to take that into consideration when we are deciding whether or not we're going to annex in a property?
I think you are able to take that into consideration. But you are not reviewing the development itself.
The specifics of the development?
Right. You are not reviewing whether the streets are wide enough, the detention basins are big enough, the buildings are the right color, too tall, that there's too many of them. There is no development application in front of you. But you've got an idea of, oh, this is going to be an apartment complex of 297 homes.
Okay. So I see what you're saying.
But you're not reviewing the development of the property. You're not issuing development approval for that.
Okay. I don't even, okay. My next question is for clarification, is the application that we have that to annex the property, is that a valid application?
Yes.
Is what we have a valid application? Okay. And then my last question is, what is the conceptual, I think this is probably what is is confusing and is holding everybody up. It's like, what is the conceptual plan? Because it does seem to keep changing. But I was under the impression that that's, we can't even take that into consideration. But now we can take that into consideration? So I'm maybe even more confused than I walked in here. But I think the problem, one of the biggest problems is no one knows exactly what they, what the developer wants to do with the property. And so then how are we supposed to make sure that it is substantially the same as when they put in the application?
Dan, let me see if I can help for a second. Once this is annexed, it has to be zoned. We're trying to create a development profile? I'm not sure that's right. I'm not a planner. But we've got it annexed and zoned medium density. That limits some of the things that can go in there, right? It opens doors and closes doors. Is that reasonable, fair?
That's a fair assessment.
Okay.
reason I'm hesitating and figuring out how to answer Counselor Ohr's question is that I think that we wrote the code in 2013 or 14 with the assumption that the applicant's request for what zone they wanted would most likely be granted. And therefore, if they came in with a conceptual plan for a development that met the zone they were asking for, then they are obligated to be substantially compliant with that sketch. The problem arises, as in the present case, where, one, we've now had three different sketches, because there were three different zones asked for. My answer to your question about which sketch is it is fairly easy to answer. It's the last one that's on the record, because obviously, the first one can't be done with the zoning that you've done.
Okay.
But still, the last one that was submitted is for a development that cannot be done under the zoning that the council appears to be ready to assign to it, based on your approving the first consideration of Ordinance 1043.
I think that's where my hangup is right now.
Right. it could be done, as I said in the public hearing, in that as a master plan development, our code allows any mix of housing types. So someone could come in with an application for a master plan development and have all, or almost all, multifamily buildings in their development. But my recollection is that sketch plan talked about 297 units, and it will be very difficult, if not impossible, to have that many under medium-density zoning.
Mr. Mayor?
But again, over the years, as I've talked to applicants or potential applicants about what substantial compliance means, you know, I've said, "Well, if your sketch shows 50 homes and you come in with 53, then you're probably substantially compliant. But if your sketch shows 50 homes and you come in with 95, then you probably aren't." But, you know, well, 53 is okay, is 55, is 58, is 62, you know? That will be up to the decision of the decision makers, the Planning Commission or the city council, when the time comes, as to determine what is substantially compliant with what was shown before.
Dan, trying to offer a question that maybe hopefully offers reassurance to some of the rattled nerves in the community. Am I given to understand that this particular development would demand a planned unit development? It would, the whole thing would have to be laid out and then reviewed and approved or modified by this group and the Planning Commission? Do I understand that correctly?
Because, as I said at the public hearing, because there are significant wetlands on the property, our code requires that if there is a land division, a subdivision, that it be developed in accordance with the master plan development standards. As a matter of routine, a master plan development would be approved, reviewed, modified, approved by the Planning Commission, and only come to the city council should there either be an appeal or a council member call up the decision. The role the city council has as a matter of routine is that it is up to the council to determine the ownership of open space within the master plan development. Which is really deciding whether the city will accept dedication of that land or whether they need to give it to someone else.
But this quick follow-up. This zoning of medium density does not just throw the door open for these wild numbers that have been thrown around, 286, 3,203 level apart. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't just throw it open to anything. There's still going to be reviews and and potential modifications of whatever goes in there by this group and the Planning Commission.
By assigning medium-density zoning, the council is setting a ceiling of 12 dwelling units per acre. However, there is, in the master plan development standards, the potential for density bonuses if the design of the development exceeds our minimum standards by certain criteria, there are a series of density bonuses that could be granted. So it could conceivably be slightly higher than 12 units per acre. 12, 14 years that those standards have been in place, first of all, there's only been two master plan developments. One of them did not meet the minimum density requirements, and there were conditions of approval to add dwelling units. The second, the developer chose not to take advantage of those density bonuses.
I'd like to think I'd reflect the sentiment of the community, though, rather than increasing the densities, that I would want to go the other way a little bit. Smaller than smaller than maximum.
Right. Well, again, the code provides density bonus, for instance, for providing additional open space than what the minimum is, for having quote, "better architectural and design standards than what our minimum calls for." I'm trying to remember what else. Oh, for providing public open space instead of just, you know, for dedicating a public park? You can get a couple percent more homes in there.
Okay, but all subject to review?
All subject to, all subject to two public hearings. Because they have to come before the Planning Commission with a conceptual, with a conceptual plan, and then come in with a detailed plan after getting that approved.
All right. I'm going to go ahead.
Mr. Mayor? I have a question. I have a question, just the same conceptual map or conceptual plan that we were talking about. What zoning, it's two questions. What zoning can a mobile park be in? What kind of zone?
Either the medium-density residential zone or the high-density residential zone.
Okay, so either of those. So we, my, one of my questions was already answered when you said that the conceptual map that would be the, basically the final one that was submitted, the high-density one, would be then the one that, when the planning part comes, they have to be substantially in line with that plan, because that's what was submitted the most recent with the application. Now, in the letter from the person that is doing, the developer, it said that they're going to do 350 dwelling units, then their conceptual plan says 297. How can they meet that in a medium density, even with open space?
I don't, I don't think they will.
I don't think they can either. So we are trying to pass something that we can't, the developer can't even meet under any circumstances, because the conceptual plan is for high density. And the code also says, I'm taking this from the March 2 meeting that we had in 2020, that it not only has to match the character and intent of the plan, meaning the character and intent of that plan is apartment complexes, basically. High density. So it would have to match that. Then the numbers and types of the buildings that will be on there would also have to match that conceptual plan. And the original application is talking about a mobile home park. So like, nothing really matches there, so I don't really understand, how can we even do this? It just seems like it needs to go, be opened, go back, and, like, we can't do this, can we? We can't go forward in this way. Last time, we opened up or we continued because we wanted a conceptual plan. So now we're going to do it differently?
Mr. Mayor?
Let's see if Dan has an answer to that question. For that concern.
It is, again, recognizing that there's some judgment involved in deciding what is substantially compliant with. It is conceivable that under medium-density zoning, with the density bonuses that are available, the total number of units that could be allowed is substantially close to 290-something. Because the code allows up to a 50% increase in density. So my recollection is the 12 times 19.1 got us to about 229 units. And 297 is less than 50% above that.
So in public hearings in the past, including this one, you've already given your opinion on what substantial means. So I believe it was a lot smaller than of a number than jumping from to whatever is allowed in medium density to 297 and 350, which are the same. Like, I don't see how it's possible.
I don't know where the 350 comes from.
It comes from the
I know where, I know it comes from Mr. Jones's letter.
Yes.
But it's not part of the sketch plan that was submitted. And it is not at all, in reality, with what's possible in medium-density zoning.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
So I said last time, we get to decide when someone comes before us and they give us an application and they say, "This is what we want to do." And then we get to decide if they get to do that or not, or we get to change it. like you just said with our code, we're, they're supposed to give us a conceptual drawing with that. And so if we change the zoning on them and they can't do what they want to do, then now we have no idea what's going to happen to this property, which then we have no conceptual drawing for this property. Is that?
Yes, that's the dilemma we find ourselves in when we choose something other than what the applicant has requested.
Okay. And so I am, am I under, maybe finally understanding where my fellow counselors are coming from, that that is the rub, that then we don't know what's happening with this property to say whether or not it is actually a need for the community and fits all the criteria? That was really just me verbally processing. what's left to say about that? But I, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I needed to say this at the beginning of, we didn't have a hearing to open, I guess, but I needed to declare a potential conflict of interest, because I am a real estate agent in the area and I deal with property. And so annexing in property, I could potentially be a part of this someday, and so I just wanted to put that on the record. I do not have any ties with it currently, so I do not need to recuse myself, but just for the potential sake.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty. I had mentioned at the start of this meeting that I had a couple ex parte contacts to declare on this one. Both spoke in opposition to this passage of this ordinance. However, this won't be affecting my vote as my vote as nothing they brought up was tantamount to the actual record. It's gonna be from Jared Tadina and Margaret Abels. And I think Counselor Hook also had some too.
Yeah, I already declared them, since we're not in a public hearing, I don't have to do it again, but. I do have a question. Can we? Dan, can we reopen the hearing? And. Change things so that we can send this back to the planning commission for them to go through with a conceptual drawing? Like, can we do that with an actual medium density conceptual drawing and just send it back to them? Can, is that an option we can do? Because. Verbally, in March of 2020, you had, you had said that. Because of the time constraint. You hadn't given us all of the options on paper because you didn't know that he was coming forward with a high density. But that one of the options for us at that point was. To send it, to do, take no action and to send it back to the planning commission. I didn't see that as an option last week either. On, on the paperwork that we got, so I, that's why I'm curious, can we do that? Is that an option?
Go ahead, Dan.
I, I believe that it is because you've not made a final decision on this yet. I did not include it as an option in the staff report. Last week because essentially a year and a half ago, the council. Had that option placed in front of them and chose not to take it, so we were proceeding without sending the applicant back to the planning commission, so it didn't make sense to send them, to proceed and then not, and then send them back. But, but.
Dan, another question, please.
But yeah, I, I think that that's, that. That option is still available to you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty, I also have a follow-up question, just to put that out there.
I've got one on the, on the table. Senator, back to planning commission, basically nullifies last week's vote, right?
Correct, and that, and that's. My concern in that you, you already. Voted to approve it. If. If the vote last week had been unanimous, we wouldn't be here discussing it, the mayor presumably would have signed the ordinance and we'd be done. So, having taken that vote, I. I am a bit hesitant to say yes, but I think because you haven't taken the final vote, that that option is still available to you.
Counselor Patty, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Dan, in that scenario, would the applicant then be required to submit a new annexation application for the medium density that he desires at that point? Or would we be relying on the same application?
I, I don't see any need to submit a new application form. The application was submitted, it was essentially modified by that. January 2020 email. That says, we're withdrawing our comprehensive plan amendment application, we would like a residential zone applied to us. And then. Was further modified in March. When they came into the council hearing room and specified that they wanted high density and then later followed that up in writing. So I, I don't see what purpose submitting a new form serves. We've got a written record of the application was submitted, it was then modified by those, those actions.
Okay, and just to beleaguer this point some more, so do you think that email will stand to the land use board of appeals if this decision was ultimately appealed? And then you're changing the application that we're considering based on an email?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm, I'm okay with the form, I think. What. Where I'm stuck is that because we. Right now where I'm stuck is because we are changing the density that he wants. And the conceptual drawings now do not match. That density. Then now we have no idea, we don't have any idea and we cannot hold. This developer to that substantially the same. Standard, so Dan, how do, I mean, obviously, like you said, the, the ordinance were written with the, with that intent, but. The situation arises, so then. I mean, is it prudent to then send it back to the. The planning commission so that he can submit a new conceptual drawing? And in, okay, so this is where, this is where I'm getting. The, the two things. And you have to bear with me because I am a verbal processor, so this is where the two things that are going on in my head. One is that you said that our city ordinances say that a conceptual drawing needs to, needs to accompany it at the very least. But the annexation really just says, do we want this in the city? These are the criteria, however, one of the criteria is, do we need this? Does it fit? And if we don't, if we change the zoning on him from what he wants and we don't know what he wants, then how do we decide if it actually does fit? I know that was a lot.
I'll, I'll have to take those in reverse order. As I said last week, and as I said in, in my staff report for last week. Your determination of fit, or as the code calls it compatibility. I think comes from what zoning you apply to it. By looking around and saying, over here is medium density and over there is medium density and over, and across the street is low density, high density doesn't fit, medium density is compatible. While I. Appreciate. The notion of sending the applicant back to the planning commission for them. To provide. Recommendation to you. I'm not quite sure what purpose that will serve. If you want to see a. Conceptual plan of what the developer has in mind, considering that. You're assigning medium density zoning and it's likely to not be 290 whatever apartments. Then I think you could, just as you did a year and a half ago. Require the applicant to submit that to you without going back to the planning commission. It would still require you to reopen, it would require a motion to reopen the record, reopen the hearing. We would have to provide notice, it's not something that will be coming back to you on November 2nd or whatever Monday night is. And I guess. I would suggest that if that's, if the council wants to see that, to have both a. Higher level of comfort as to your finding of compatibility, as well as to have something on paper for the future that we can hold a, a future applicant. To being substantially consistent with or compliant with whatever the language in the code is, then that would be my recommendation, rather than. Sending it back to the planning commission and then you're gonna have to make your own decision anyway and that would just prolong. The process even further and we've been at this for two years with this application already.
Sure. Thank you, Dan, I really appreciate you and all that. Mr. Mayor.
Dan. One quick question, one, what motivates me in this is something that former city manager told me, says always work on the basis of what do you want the community to look like? That should be the prime motivation. In your decisions, what do you want this community to look like? And as best you can enable that, then that's what you do. You had a question, thought, somebody?
And, and I think we have, we have partially done that, and I'll stress partially done that. By enacting the design standards that are in our code. That. Will result in. New development that is, has a substantially higher visual appeal than what was built here in the past. The other part of that is determining what gets built where. And, and you do that through your assigning of the, of the zoning districts.
Yeah. I'm not gonna argue with that. Although 297 apartments in any, on any piece of ground, I don't know where you, how you get a visual appeal on that, but that's, that's way beyond what we need to be working on tonight. Who had a question or thought?
I do.
Go ahead, please.
Do we need to do public comment? Is it out of order to, to make a motion if we, if we wanted to open public, the public hearing again? And do what we just talked about with Dan, if we wanted to do that. Is it out of order or do we need to have public comment first?
Well, it's in the agenda, I was gonna go ahead and allow it.
I still have a question for Dan.
Anything else, Dan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Dan, is, is there not value in letting the planning commission do their job and make a recommendation based on a complete application with a medium density conceptual plan? And no other conceptual plans introduced in the process? You don't see any value in that?
With all due respect to the planning commission, no. And I, and I say that because. When the applicant returned to the planning commission in January of 20. The applicant. Had shown a conceptual plan. For. A development that would be approvable in the medium density zone. It was a mobile home park. But if that. Same site plan had been site-built homes, but the same layout and density and open space. It, it would be the same development, just the homes were built on site instead of in a factory and, and brought here. And the planning commission recommended to you. Medium density zoning be applied and it was only after that, that the developer came in and said, oh, nope, now I don't want to do that, I want to do apartments. So I don't know. What, what value will be added to the process by going back to the planning commission? When it is ultimately your decision. As to what is compatible and what you want to see. The future of this, this property to be.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Dan? Counselor?
Two questions, I believe. Is there anywhere in the code that provides or allows an applicant to submit multiple site sketches? In the, for the, in the contingency that their zoning request may be changed? Or it's, I mean, it's likely, I think it's likely that there is, there's not mentioned anywhere?
Right, it, it is not envisioned, but I, I don't think it is precluded.
And then that's why it was figured, and then so, is there anything that stops us from. Using the medium density map that they did submit as their criteria for development when they apply for development? Because my, my, my guess is that if we. Send this back, they will resubmit with the same exact drawing that they, that we already have of the medium density zone of the mobile home park. And we'll be back here looking at the same exact. Same exact application with, with the same drawing that we have, only submitted in what we're nitpicking about the correct order is currently. Just as an additional note, I think maybe we should look at. Maybe a code amendment to. To cover this situation where. They can apply for an annexation in a particular zone and we. Apply a different zone that's not compatible and then they're, they're screwed, so we should, I think we should say, listen, this could be low, medium or high, give us a low, medium and high drawing if that's the case with your stated preference. And then we don't have to do this. Then we have all situations accounted for.
Right, or, or at least. Change the code so that there's an out, you shall substantially comply if your wish is granted, but obviously you, should the council assign a zone other than what you were expecting, then there's an out.
Right, and the important part is, I think, is the second question, which was. If we approve the annexation with medium density now, can we use the medium density map that they submitted? As, as their. Requirement?
I, I would. Want to consult with the. City attorney on that before I gave you a reply. Because they, the applicant essentially said, oh, forget that one, now I have a new one. And for, for us to then say, well, we're going to annex you, but we expect you to do choice B that you've now rejected, I. Don't want to answer that without getting some legal advice.
Fair enough, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I would agree with Counselor McDonald about, I mean, this is obviously a different subject, but like the code change because. Now, like you, like Dan just pointed out, okay, we've thrown out what the idea was or what this developer wants to do or has changed so that they wanted to do high density. And given us, given us a site plan, well, now that site plan is not gonna work, and so now. If we did use a previous thing and they don't want to be held to that and we say, well, tough luck, I mean, that's, you know, then we're really telling them what to do with their property when, when they told us that they, they didn't. to do with their property when they told us that they didn't necessarily want to do that anymore, because they wanted a different density. They may come back to us and say, okay, yes, we do want it. That is, in fact, what we want to do now that you have zoned it medium-density. But so, Dan, what's the process if we approve this right now? And then when do they bring you another conceptual drawing?
At the risk of appearing flip, when they're ready. Should you approve this ordinance, the second consideration of this ordinance tonight, and this finalizes it? Then essentially, the ball is in their court for when they're ready to proceed with development. It could be, and their next step in the development process is to request a pre-application meeting with staff, in which they say, here's the development we want to do, and staff will tell them, well, here's the code provisions that apply to it, and Public Works will say, and here's the infrastructure improvements that will go along with it. And then they submit an application for subdivision or site plan review, or whatever it is. There is no timeframe. They could walk in, if you approve this tonight, they could walk in next week and request that pre-application meeting, or it could be 20 years, 20 more years that the property's sitting there vacant and undeveloped.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Dan.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. Dan, so even if we were to open the hearing, hypothetically, if we were to open the hearing, somehow change it to where they can go off of the conceptual map of the mobile home park, would I be correct in saying that those 96 mobile homes, they would be kind of the guide for how many units he could put, based on code from the 3-2-20 hearing that you stated how the code is laid out? Would I be correct that, you know, he couldn't then do like 150, 200 units? Because he put forward mobile home unit, 96 dwelling units on that property, we would need a different conceptual map if he wanted to do something more, right?
Correct. Correct. And I would conjecture that should you reopen the hearing with the idea that you need to figure out which conceptual plan that you're going to, that the city's going to go by, that we will see yet a fourth conceptual plan because of that. Because if he was restricted to 96 single-family dwellings, again, whether they're site-built or factory-built, whether it's a subdivision or all one parcel, and people own their home and rent a space, I don't think that that is what he has in mind now.
Would I also be correct in assuming that, or with the code, that the code states that the conceptual plan submitted with the annexation application is the one that is supposed to be used when we are determining whether it substantially matches? So a fourth conceptual plan after our vote would actually not be a thing that could happen. It would be decided by the council.
I would submit that just like the withdrawal of the comprehensive plan amendment did not require a new application to be submitted, that should the council choose to reopen the hearing and allow for additional submissions and testimony, then coming up with a fourth sketch conceptual plan would mean that that last plan is the one that is submitted with the application.
Mr. Mayor?
That an applicant is not bound by what was submitted on day one of the process. I mean, it is not unusual for a development plan to be submitted, to be reviewed, to have, for the developer to see review comments, and then, prior to the hearing, submit revised plan that addresses those review comments, so that they have a plan that is approved with fewer conditions of approval and meets the code. So that doesn't mean that we're limited to the plan that was submitted originally. The applicant submitting a revision takes the first off the table and says, put this one on the table instead, please. And it is still the plan that is submitted with the application.
So if there's a new conceptual plan, if we hypothetically open this up, and we allow for more public comment, we allow for the applicant to bring another conceptual plan, you still don't see value in it going to the planning commission, where there's also additional steps for the public to take the time to understand the new conceptual plan, to put all these very confusing pieces together, and go through that process again, where we have time limits of, you know, you have to have them within a certain days, certain days apart. There has to be enough notification to the surrounding people that live there that they can, that they can know that a public hearing is coming up. You still don't see value in a whole new conceptual plan, because before, Councilor McDonald had said something about they'd probably come up with the same plan, the same RV park thing. Well, now we're talking about that they aren't, that they're going to come up with a fourth plan. So you still don't see value in it going through that process, even for the public comment portion of it.
No, I don't. The public will be provided adequate time to look at that plan and prepare their comments to you, rather than providing them to the planning commission and then providing them to you a second time.
Just a question to the council. What are we likely to hear with a reopened hearing, a reopened record? What are we likely to hear different from what we've already heard?
We won't know until we open it. And I know that I have plenty more things that I would love to talk about, but I also know that there are similar concerns with other counselors. So at this point, I'm not talking about those things.
Mr. Mayor? So for clarification, though, so Counselor Hook, you were saying that if we assigned medium-density, you were saying that the conceptual drawing that was given to us for the mobile home park, we can't hold him to that? That's like, so if it had however many homes it had on it, we can't hold him to that, because that's not what was, because the last one that he gave us was the high-density, and then that was a conceptual drawing. So now, I'm perfectly fine annexing it in and giving it medium-density, but that hasn't changed for me. I guess what's changed for me is that we don't have a conceptual drawing from the developer for that specific zoning, the current one. That's what's changed for me at the moment.
If you don't have a conceptual drawing, you can't annex it in, because it says right here on this city document that the application checklist for annexation review, conceptual plan, if the application for annexation is not accompanied by a concurrent application for site plan, subdivision, or other land use approval, a conceptual plan of proposed uses of the property. That's what's required. Conceptual plan.
So I want to be clear that it is, he does have a conceptual plan for the zoning that he wanted, which was the high-density. But we are telling him, and like I said last time, we get to choose, so we get to decide. And we're saying, no, we don't want high-density. But now the conceptual drawing no longer fits, so now we have no idea.
Exactly. We have no idea. Exactly. You are, we are on the exact same wavelength right here.
Okay.
We don't know, and we can't know. And we can't annex this without knowing what that plan is. And we can't use the most recent one, because it's high-density, and there's no, Dan has already said, we can't, they can't do that many as what's proposed in there. And it's high-density. And we can't hold them to 96 units, because that's not the most recent plan. So we really don't have anything to go off of.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Counselor?
I get where Counselor Hook is coming from. My inclination is to get out of the way a little bit. I think we've got support from the public for medium-density zoning. I think we heard vast majority of them be in support of that. They were all against high-density, which I understand. This is what we're deciding, is the zoning. We're not deciding whether we want a mobile home park, or duplexes, or townhomes, or anything else right now. We're deciding what range of densities we want it in. I kind of, I don't want to put, I don't want to create additional extraneous hoops for developers to jump through. I think we're going to have the opportunity to review their development plan down the road. We know that what we want is medium-density. That is, in fact, what we're deciding here tonight. I think we've got majority of support for that. I don't see the point in delaying, making them reapply, resubmit, when we're going to come to the same conclusion regarding annexation and zoning. I understand that we're technically not going to have a site sketch to compare their development plan with. However, I am not of the opinion that that matters that much when we are getting the zoning that we and the public support. So for that reason, I think we should move ahead and approve the application with medium-density zoning as we had last week. And we want to, when we get to the development plan, we'll get to it, and we'll have the opportunity to call it up and review that plan. I don't see any reason to stall any further.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. Currently in the staff report, asking Dan questions here. We're not in council deliberation yet.
Okay. All right. But, okay, that was going to come out eventually.
Mr. Mayor?
Any more questions for Dan? I've got a request for public comment in the agenda here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to get to that if we can.
This might be a question for Dan, or it could be for city manager. Do we have any risk with a Luba appeal if people go back and watch the 3-2 hearing in 2020, when at 1 hour, 27 minutes, and 35 seconds, I was limited by the mayor on what questions I could ask, how many more questions I could ask during a public hearing? And he also did the same thing to Counselor Ort at 1 hour, 30 minutes, and 15 seconds into the video. Is there a risk that we were not able to explore everything that we wanted to in that public hearing that Luba could overturn?
No, absolutely no risk, because in order for an issue to be brought to Luba, someone, not the decision-maker, but a party to the hearing process, needs to object and make sure that you, as the decision-makers, know that they believe that an error is about to be made. And they need to do it as the opening statement says before each public hearing, with enough specificity, so that you, as the decision-maker, can respond to it. The fact that the mayor did not allow a council member to ask questions does not provide any risk of a Luba appeal.
Cool. Does it?
Gee, if I have a good look at that.
So my other question, then, is if we're in a public hearing, are they each considered their own public hearing, where like the staff report, if they're going to give instruction on what a, like, in March 2, 2020, you went through an entire spiel about what people, let's see, you put failure to raise an issue at the hearing precludes anyone from bringing up that issue in any subsequent appeal. Anybody may request the opportunity to present additional testimony or evidence after tonight's proceedings. There are two things that you said in that hearing. I don't remember those being said in last week's hearing by you.
They were not said, excuse me for interrupting, they were not said by me. They were said by the mayor as part of the opening statement.
Well, you had said them, you went on quite a lengthy speech during your staff report. It was 43 minutes into the meeting, that really went into depth, for those people that were in the audience, of what basically their rights were and what actions they could do. I just don't remember that, them getting the same type of treatment this last time around, for them to understand exactly what that meant. So is that, does that seem like an issue? Does that seem?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
The October 11 hearing was a continuation of the March 2, 2020 hearing. It was not a separate or new hearing. And that explanation, that opening statement that the mayor read, provided that information. I think on March 2, because there were 30, 40-plus people behind me, I thought it was important that they understood the ground rules and what the hearing was about and what was required of them, should they be interested in pursuing anything beyond that. And again, that information was presented last week in the opening statement that the mayor read. And on both evenings, the audience was given the opportunity to raise objections. And there were, that is why we ask those questions in the opening statement, so that if anyone has objection to the notice that was raised, if anybody has objection to the jurisdiction of the body, because they need to the jurisdiction of the body, because we, they need to say it now, they can't raise it later, because that's what the law says. You have to provide, you can't come in with an appeal of something that you didn't bring up at the hearing or on the record. And because there's been no objection to anything that was presented, there was no citation of a section of the code. I feel that there is no, there, there's always the risk that someone can appeal, but there is no risk that the city, that the decision would be remanded or reversed.
Anything else for Dan tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just one more thing. So I want to make sure that we're not setting a precedent for future developers, because it is a requirement to have the site plan. And again, yes, to the extent that this is what the applicant wanted, this is their application, I don't see anything, I, I don't have a problem with him changing his mind and submitting a new plan, but we have since changed the zoning on him, and now we don't have a site plan. And I want to make sure that we're not setting a precedent for later on, for a developer to say, well, you didn't require a site plan for that, you let them just go. And obviously, this is a little bit out of order, but our code doesn't account for this situation. And so I want to make sure, is it, again, is it almost more prudent to go back and make them, make the developer now give us a site plan for this density before we annex it in? For that reason.
There, there is no precedence in a legal meaning, the way there is when the, when the U.S. Supreme Court or the Oregon Supreme Court issues a ruling and as to what is constitutional, or what the law says, or here's how we have to act. Because you treat developer A a certain way, assuming that it's legal, does not mean that you have to treat developer B. Developer B can't come in two years later and said, oh, you did this for Gene Jones, you've got to treat me the same way. They can pressure you into doing so, but there is, your decisions on any land use case before you does not set a precedent in, in the legal sense for future cases. Yes, we should be consistent. Yes, we should treat people fairly and equitably, but we should not, I'll, I'll go back to a, a, a court case I, I recall fondly from my days back in Maine, where the judge said, I know I ruled this way a year and a half ago, and I believe there's great value in consistency, but there's no value in being consistently wrong. And I believe I was wrong a year and a half ago, and I'm now reversing the way I ruled then. So yes, while there's great value in being consistent, you don't want to be consistently wrong, you want to be consistently right. And if you, just because you've said, oh, Mr. Jones, you don't need to do something, when Mr. Smith comes in, if the code says they have to do something, they have to do To the second part of your question, it may be prudent to get a conceptual plan of potential development at medium-density that reflects the applicant's current thinking of what they would want for the property. But doing so means reopening the record, because you don't have that in front of you now, and taking the time to do it.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Any other questions for Dan?
Yes.
Counselor?
Thank you. Dan, what date in October was this application received by the city? I don't see an application received date. Like, what was the date? Did they?
I believe, I don't want to be held to this, but I, it was sometime around the 12th or 13th or so, because I know when I was answering your questions on Friday, that I included my letter to them that was dated October 14, saying that I had found the application incomplete. So, I mean, I have that in the files, but I don't recall exactly, you know, because there was a letter saying, there was also, there's a letter in the files saying, I received your application by email this afternoon. Whether that was the 10th, the 11th, the 12th, I don't remember, but by the 14th, I'd had the time to look at it and say it's incomplete.
So when did the application no longer become erroneous?
I don't believe the application ever was erroneous.
Um, Mar, or December 9, 2019's Planning Commission meeting, staff report states the applicant has not provided-
Oh, there was, there was information in the application-
It says the application is erroneous.
Yes, there was, there was information in the application that was factually incorrect. It became that way when submitted.
And we never got anything that then made it not erroneous?
No, but information, but correct information was put on the record. And that, that correct information is reflected in your findings. So, so again, if the application says there's a six-inch sewer line on Main Street, and the staff report, and, or the Public Works review comments say there's an eight-inch sewer line on Main Street, then that doesn't mean the applicant needs to submit a new application. It means there was erroneous information in the application that has been corrected in the record, and the findings will say, Public Works Department says there's an eight-inch sewer line on Main Street. That's the type of erroneous information that was mentioned in the staff report.
And not be accused of stifling debate, which I don't believe I ever do, but anyway, that's all right. I've got a request for recognition under public comment, if we could move to that. There's still, there's still a council discussion as-
Thank you, Dan.
We'll get there on that. So Brian Quigley.
Under public comment. How about now? Thanks, Dan. Brian Quigley, 1013 East Virginia Street. Since the record will not be officially open, I will try to direct my comments towards the process, to see if I can shed some light on this. Couple of things to start off with. You're afforded the ability, under the charter, to rehear this, and that's why you're here today, to reconsider the motion, because the motion did not pass unanimously. So number one, consider that to be your responsibility. Number two, the process for Luba appeal, as Dan mentioned, is up to any individual in the community. And on my time in the council, that happened several times. That's another opportunity afforded to the community, to try to persuade the powers that be that the decision was incorrect. So those two things there. But my main concern, and what prompted me to reach out to you all and submit the letter that I did for the record, was during council deliberations, when you guys were talking about what action you were going to take on the annexation, there was a lot of questions that came up, that arrived, in particular about the nature of the application to begin with. And in that application that was submitted by the applicant, his request was for an interchange zone. And two of you are very astute in looking at that and asking that question. So after the end of the night, I went back and I started looking at it, and my concern today, and it will always stand, is the public record process. Dan will tell you that, don't take this into consideration, the public records, the public record was, took place last week, and your decision is to not submit or open the hearing again. And he asked council for the same opinion, and council told him the same thing. You all received four additions or four new pieces of information to support the new hearing from last week, right? I'm not privy to what those were, but that does add an element to the public record not being so public and not being so comprehensive, right? My concern is that the process that we have in the community is spelled out in the code, and the community has a right to know when the public record comes, that it's comprehensive, that contains everything in there before it's elevated to the next step to make a determination. That's why I was calling to question some of the things I asked you guys about. That's why I was calling to question about when an application is withdrawn from the consideration, right? What does that mean? How does it elevate to the next step? All very pertinent stuff that we need to make sure the community has an opportunity to discuss. In this particular case, the process, I don't think, from a public record standpoint, was really followed, and it calls into a lot of questions on different things. The initial decision or the initial request by the applicant was for annexation for interchange use. And today, you're hearing different things, that it doesn't matter what designation you guys give it, as long as there's a site plan for it. Well, the site plan's changed four different times. So take all those things into consideration, please. I'm not trying to open the record again, I just want that to be privy and be out there so you guys have an opportunity to thoroughly discuss what you're looking at and analyzing before making a determination, that's all. You just heard Dan say, I'll paraphrase, something about, you guys need to make sure the site plan's there so for future developers that come in are doing that, right? We're adhering to the code, following the process. It's not a bad recommendation, I think it's a good thing, I think it's a great suggestion. But to sit here and say that nothing else should be considered after the public hearing being closed, it's very hard for me to swallow, especially when the information comes after the fact, when the hearing's been closed, and I have time for community members to analyze it and look at it and say, well, wait a minute, that doesn't make sense to me, and then come back to you as a body and say, hey, hello, what about this one? So that's where I'm at. I appreciate you listening to me. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, that's the only request I had for-
I've got a couple more.
Oh, but there, there's more. It's all right, okay.
Sad, we have one.
Uh, Jeanie, Jeanie Gislio, Gislio, I don't know why I have such trouble with more or less American names.
Hello, good evening, I'm the mayor and council members. I don't, just have something brief I wanted to emphasize, and just to be real clarity on the fact that this wetland designation means that, you know, it makes things more And so the, the medium density in this parcel doesn't really mean normal medium density at all. Medium density never permits multifamily housing. That's crystal clear in everything that I've read and heard, actually, even from the planning, represented from the Planning Commission. Or they don't allow 50% bonuses, so you could have, you know, your 297 apartments and then half again that amount. That, no matter, you know, that, that's not what we associate with normal medium density. Even all three densities on this parcel allow for apartments, allow for multifamily. And I noticed that, Councilwoman, or last week, she mentioned that there was, that the medium density would be single-family housing, duplexes, and triplexes, and you stop there. It allows apartments. It allows any form of the different types of housing. And I just felt like last week, too, that just, a couple of the council members that there was, seemed to be, you know, more, I don't know, almost like you're representing more either the interests of the developer or the interests, you know, of the people that would like to move to Staton, sort of, almost to the exclusion of how the, you know, somewhat, I won't, I don't want to overstate it, but, you know, you could have over 300 apartments in that complex. And so I just feel like whatever decision you make, that, and it is, like, just listening to discussion, it is very, you know, there's a lot of complexities because of the designation of that. And I think that most people in the surrounding neighborhoods would be pretty comfortable with, you know, really what they would like to see is single-family homes. They would be comfortable with that, and, you know, I guess that, that's what I'd like to share. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, her other half, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I, I have some prepared things, but I see that you're thinking about those things tonight. They weren't brought up a lot. Maybe I wasn't listening in the other meeting, but one thing about, that was brought up about the interchange commercial development. There was a recommendation by the staff back then that, to make it, the first recommendation was to make it low-density. I think, I can't remember when that was, Dan, but it was close to the beginning of this process. So based upon the comments by, my wife said some of this, but based upon the comments made by two of the city councilors, it appears that they represent the interests of a landowner, developer, and the people who would like to move to our wonderful rural community of Staton, over and above those of the current residents of Staton, the folks they were elected to serve. Excuse me. It's been made abundantly clear that we all recognize the need for more affordable in housing, affordable housing in Staton, but it needs to be done the right way. The need for housing should not allow for the violation of the vested rights and needs of the current residents and property owners of the neighborhood, and the requirement that the application meet all six criteria. the application meet all six criteria. It, it does not allow for stretching the law of any of the required criteria. The primary obligation and duty of the city council is to preserve and protect the health, welfare, safety, and quality of the life of the entire neighborhood in this decision. In appeals to other similar cases, courts have typically ruled in favor of plaintiffs noting that zoning regulations are presumed to be well-founded, and change should never happen without compelling reasons and always in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The proposed development of a high-density, which they say 397, but anyway, it could be about 340-unit apartment complex, is at complete odds with the exclusively single-family detached dwellings surrounding the property. Clearly, the applicant is being utterly dishonest when he asserts that his development is in character with the surrounding neighborhood. Unfortunately, the motion made and vote taken on the, in the October 11th meeting for medium density rather than high-density contains a major caveat. The significant wetland designation of the property due to the Lucas ditch puts the development under a different code, allowing the master, allowing a master-plan development. This allows for many more units and more flexibility for the developer to build clusters, potentially resulting in a 340-plus apartment complex. This exception, allowing for master-plan development, creates a conflict with, with the city's comprehensive plan. No matter the label that you attach to it, this is, this could put, even though you label it medium-density, it could in reality be high-density and worse than the 297 we began with. So, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, sorry, Mayor.
I need to, I need to...
Okay, I'm, yeah, so basically, okay, I'll make it, when it's all said and done, a development of this size could bring in millions in dollars for the developer at the expense of the entire surrounding neighborhood, and in terms of safety, noise, traffic, crime, potential flooding, more police calls, and lowering property values. 10th Street, is your, okay, you want me to stop? I'll stop. Okay, I'll stop. But basically, I think what needs to be looked at is the comprehen, the code that you have for master-plan development seems to be in conflict with the comprehensive plan. That's all I would like to bring up.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Back to council discussion. Who wants to start?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just want to apologize for the content of my comments earlier being out of order, but my opinion and points still stand. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Yes? This is Counsel Patty. First off, I, nothing personal there. I just wanted to go ahead and isolate this portion of, well, it's not a hearing, but this is part of the agenda. So I just wanted to state in discussion, you know, I ran on a platform of increased transparency and ensuring that at least the members of the council in 2018 were continuing to open transparently, or operate transparently and be forthcoming with the citizens. And so, and running, I kind of set out to...
Margaret Abels?
I had set out to go ahead and address the largest problem that I felt in the community was that we didn't have our concerns shared with the city council before they made decisions. And so, I feel like we've come a long way since I got elected in 2019, and I think we've made a lot of progress. I think a couple of us can attest to that. And, you know, I just look at the audience and I don't, they've come to us with these, these concerns about this criteria not being met. I'm choosing to be responsive to that today. I just don't want to see this progress to be responsive to the citizens be set back. And then, I also don't want to see this decision, if we are prepared to pass this, taint every land-use decision this body makes going forward, especially with some of the concerns stated, ensuring that we have high-density housing stock going forward for some of the housing applications that are coming our way. So I just think it's important for us all to understand that we're in a quasi-judicial function at this point. We're not really voting what our opinion is. We're just looking at the criteria, the annexation, and saying, "Okay, does it mean it? And I'm reading it, it doesn't." So, I just, I find it really concerning that the initial application document wasn't in the packet from March 2020. I recognize that it's in the land-use file for all of us to go to on the Staton City webpage, but I find that concerning that it wasn't included. And so, now that I only have that annexation application to consider, it's, to me, I find it a little difficult to believe that an email suffices to change that. So I just, I just want to state that on the record as far as my discussion of where my votes coming from this evening. And then, in addition to that, the lack of a conceptual plan and its current requested application is also extremely concerning to me, because we're basically giving them carte blanche if we pass this, to go forward with whatever. And that's kind of how I see that. So that's kind of concerning, too. So I just would encourage the other councilors here that made the decision they made last week to consider what I've said here and what the other folks have said tonight.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. We're going to, not a timeout, we need to go back for a minute because I, I didn't get to hear a request for comment. I got distracted with listening to a former comment and then just went on and missed this one. Margaret, have you got a comment to make? Dan?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I am compelled to say this. If you are worried about the risk of a Luba appeal, the more you let comment be made after the record is closed, the greater the city's risk is of facing an appeal and losing an appeal.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I can only speak for myself. I'm well aware that the comments that had any new information, I am not able to consider. There were some comments that had the same information as other comments that were made. I appreciate having that put out there, that we do need to remember that we cannot consider anything new that's brought forward. I still think we should let people speak.
Okay. That's what I was trying to do. Yeah, Margaret?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I can, I do not envy your job. And I really hate talking, but I almost feel like we should have a birthday party. This has been two years from, it's on.
What's your name, please, and where do you live?
Oh, Margaret Abels, P.O. Box 365, Sublimity, 2140, Wildflower Drive, Staton, Oregon.
Ah, okay.
Two years. Dan just said it was October of 2019. I was at the December 9th public hearing for an RV park interchange development known as Fern Ridge Meadow RV Park, and it was already on the website when I came on December 9th with an indoor pool, laundry facilities, and a snack bar. Applicant made a presentation, stated 70 houses would provide more traffic than the 200 RVs, and then also stated definitely needed more, or I guess I, my analysis definitely needed more research and planning, and he asked for a continuation until January 27th, January 14th, 2020, applicant reviewed RV request and asked for revised conceptual plan be changed to the mobile home park, asked for residential zoning possible mobile home sketch. Now, think back two weeks. He had just finished a 297 apartment drawing complex on December 23rd, but he chose not to present that on January 14th. January 27th, there was a public hearing continued about the RV park, mobile home park, and manufactured home park terminology. Thank you for helping me learn a lot about that. I still have trouble with that. The Fern Ridge RV park was still on the website, even though he had pulled the request on that two weeks previously. I agree there needs to be more low and moderate housing in and around Staton. I'm not sure Staton needs a trailer park or an apartment complex of great size. I also think smaller homes make people, make affordable housing. It's for people. Affordable housing does not mean rentals. On October 11th, another great meeting last week, you guys are amazing, I'm just not sure, surrounding areas, low-density, medium-density, they're individual homes owned by people. I don't believe there's anti-rentals. I believe the mobile homes are actually owned and they rent the land, but they do have some ownership in that. I have some sites, most tiny homes cost under $150,000. The mortgage is usually no more than $600,000, to own, not to rent. That doesn't include the price of the land, of course, but ownership. I had a huge problem dilemma with low-density and medium-density. One of the clarifying points last week, medium-density was not to exceed 12 dwellings per acre and also had 4.4 units per acre. Low-density was stated, I'm going to mess this up here, it was 4 point, anyway, it works out to 4.3684 for low-density. You round that up, it's 4.4. Low-density and medium-density are both 4.4.
Okay.
Who knows where the math's at?
Margaret?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Margaret. Okay. All right, we're back to council discussion. Go ahead, please, somebody, or let's move along if we can, if we can.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just, I want to point out, I want to thank everyone who's come tonight and given public testimony, and I want to make it clear, like Dan said, like, we cannot take any new information into consideration. And because of that, I just feel like I, I'm the first one to say, like, I love public comment. I wish more people would come and tell us what they want so we can, you know, help, help us make better decisions that you want, you know, by coming forward, and people would rather do that on Facebook sometimes instead of come talk to us. So I do appreciate all of you that come here. But then, at the same point, I feel like it's a little disingenuous to have public comment on some, when we can't take this information into consideration with this, with like land-use issues. That's what I have to say about that.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Two, two and a half hours is left for us. Go ahead.
So, I still stand by my statement that it has not met the criteria. One thing that this has opened my eyes to is how flawed some of our process really is. I never noticed, and I, I wish I had noticed a long time ago, that the application we're considering was completely omitted, completely omitted, from the March 2nd, 2020 hearing. It was not in our packet. And then, in last week's packet, only one side of the application was there. There is no date on this of when it came in. It's not signed by staff. It's not, it doesn't even have a land-use file number on it. There is nowhere on this application where the land-use number is on it. That's not transparent at all. I don't know why we're even considering this still. It doesn't have any of that information, not to mention that we have the opportunity that we can open this hearing and consider some of the other comment that has come in that I haven't read, because I don't want to take in new information. And I was very careful in what I heard from people and what I knew I could consider that was repeat and what I couldn't consider because it was new. But I am still at the application for annexation does not meet the criteria. Now, why? Why does it not meet the criteria? Because the application A is incomplete. We have documents that say that it was erroneous. It was never even clear to me what the application was back on March 2nd. That right there should be the biggest red flag of all. None of us saw this application at the last hearing. Not one of us saw this application. The only reason that I didn't realize I hadn't seen it in that packet is because this application I'd already seen before when I was on Planning Commission. So I remembered seeing it. But everybody else didn't, didn't have this. We shouldn't have to go to a, a, a public records website for the Planning Commission to gather documents for our council meeting. That doesn't make sense. Also, there's three pages.
Can I ask you a clarifying question?
Yes.
Are you, you're saying, I don't know what application you're holding, so are you talking about the annexation application?
Yes, the annexation. I am only talking about annexation. That's all I've been talking about this whole time, annexation.
Thank you.
With this application, there are three pages of, I don't even know what it is, honestly. I don't, I don't know what this is now that I'm really combing through this so detailed. It just says Fern Ridge Annexation Proposal. Who's this from? Who wrote this? Doesn't say who wrote it, doesn't have the correct information on it. We already talked about that in, in the hearing. It still says interchange development zone. It still says RV park. I don't even know who authored this. I have no idea if some of these comments are from city staff and some of them are from the applicant. No idea. And again, no date on it, no land-use file number on it, not one thing. So, I'm highly concerned with our process, first off. And then throw in the conceptual map issue that we now have to go off of, this 297 total units as like the general amount that we have to allow, because this is the most recent conceptual map, but we're medium-density. It, it doesn't make sense. It just doesn't make sense that we're still considering this, that we're not, that we're not just opening the hearing back up. This is a reconsideration moment. This is what, this is what this meeting's for, because it wasn't unanimous. Dan said, if it had been unanimous, then we wouldn't be here, it would be approved. Yeah, but that's the point. It was not unanimous, because there are grave flaws that I am seriously concerned with for many applications that have come, come through the city. So, just because we've approved them before, when they don't have signatures, when they don't have land-use file numbers, when there's not an explanation attached to it as what it is and who wrote it, just because we've done that before doesn't mean we continue to do that. That's how we become the council from 20 years ago that let a mobile home park turn into a housing unit, because the conceptual plan. They followed the conceptual plan. So, I just don't think that this needs to be in front of us right now. So I still stand by what I wanted to do the last time, which is deny the application, and just let's start it over. I know that this is not something we want to do to developers. I do not want to be a city that is not developer-friendly. That is not what I'm saying. I'm saying that the process is so flawed. We have to go back and do it right. We know better, we have to do better.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone else? Excuse me. Anybody, anyone else? Or can we move toward a decision?
I appreciate your comments on that, Counsel Hook. I am, I'm willing to reopen the hearing to ask for a new site plan because we want it to be medium-density. And I keep going back to, I know I said last meeting, we can make it whatever we want. Well, this is us making whatever we want, but also... Well, this is us making whatever we want, but also, I don't want to, and I appreciate, Dan, I appreciate your comments, but I don't, I don't want to set a precedent of this happening again and then, I mean, I understand if a situation comes forward, we can say, no, with your application, we have to have a site plan, but if we change this again and we don't require it, then we lose one of the only, when we annex and properties, there are so many things that have to be, you know, that we have to be objective on. We lose the opportunity as a council to be subjective, and that's one of the only criteria that we get to be subjective on, and it's lacking because we changed the zoning, in my opinion. So I am for reopening the hearing to ask for a new site plan, if you are all in agreement with that.
Dan, just for consideration, what would that require? A simple, a simple motion to open the hearing?
It would, it would be, it should, it should be a motion to reopen the hearing. It would be better if there was a date certain given, but I don't know what that date should be, because I don't know what our current schedule of agendas looks like. Considering general parliamentary procedures, it would probably be better if that motion was offered by someone who voted in the prevailing way last week. And then obviously a second, and, and then we would provide notice to the public and the applicant, et cetera, of the new date of the hearing.
Okay, if that's the wish of the council, then would, would that motion have to reference a land use file?
There's only one land use file we're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing for the annexation application of 13601 Fernridge Road.
Is that, is that it? I mean, that's enough, if you want.
Is that it? Yeah, because this is our, okay. With the date.
Reopen the annexation? Yeah, go ahead, Alyssa.
With, without seeing what our future agendas look like, I think Dan was saying earlier, it'd probably be December. We have December 6th is the first meeting of December, and I think that would allow the time to do the notice.
I would certainly give time to give the notice.
So I'm, I'm sure we could make December 6th work.
That's December 6th. Do I need to state the medium density? We don't have to state why we're opening it up?
I guess I'm waiting to see if you've got your, your motion organized. Go ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion that we reopen the public hearing for the annexation application of the property at 13601 Fernridge Road to be heard again on December 6th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, this is councillor Patty. I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion to the second. Okay, discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Does that mean that if this motion passes, that the public record is open from this point on, or only starting December 6th?
Dan, please. What would that do?
That means, starting tonight, the record is reopened for the submission of written testimony, and on December 6th, there'll be a public hearing for oral testimony as well.
So for the public comment that we got that we were not allowed to consider tonight, am I able to, to, I don't want to ask them to resubmit it. Am I able to submit that for them as an ex parte contact that I got? Or like, how can we still use this public comment that people clearly took time to fill out? How can we still include that? Do I just have to read it aloud for everyone?
If this motion passes, anything that was submitted in writing between last Monday night and tonight can be entered into the record.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just want to restate that the point that I'm trying to get clarification on is, since we are changing the density that the applicant is requesting, or the latest request, that we're changing it, now their site plan does not fit that. I'd like to see, coming forward, a site plan for medium density.
Can we accomplish councillor Ort's request with, with simply reopening the hearing in December?
Yes. I will, I, I know the applicant is watching tonight, so he has clearly heard that request, but I will, assuming this motion passes, I will inform the applicant in writing of the request of the council. Whether it will be fulfilled or not is beyond my powers to predict.
We may still be deadlocked if the focus is on a flawed process, though, or what perceives, what someone, what people, people perceive as a flawed process. So, I don't know, we'll see what happens in December, maybe. Anything else? If not, Alyssa?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah. You make a really good point. I am wondering, can we have some better documentation at the next hearing that has, who wrote that three-page document that has the map on it? Can we have new documents entered into the record during that time that are accurate, that have dates that they were received on? Signatures from staff? What fee was paid? Like, can we have those updated?
Councillor Hook, you can have that stuff. I will provide that to you, but I will also submit that it is completely irrelevant to your decision-making. I appreciate your making sure that Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, but the information is before you, regardless of whether you know who wrote the document or not. The document was submitted as part of the application. It is the, quote, the applicant's document. Whether the applicant wrote it, his principal consultant wrote it, or an assistant to the consultant wrote it, it is what was submitted as part of the application. And there is no requirement in the code that it be signed or dated or, or whatever. It is, it is the application. It was the applicant's narrative in support of the application.
It's not even, but it's not labeled as the applicant's narrative?
At, at the risk of insulting the applicant and his consultants, they didn't do a very good job. But that doesn't mean that, that it's wrong, or inconsistent, or incomplete. There is no requirement that it be signed and dated. It was submitted as part of the application.
But the actual form that has the application on it, like, where they fill out their names at the bottom, it, that's our form, right? That's our city form that city staff receives, and it's not filled out.
The application form is filled out.
It's, it's not at the bottom. It's not at the bottom, and we didn't get both sides of the application until I went on to...
And, and I have apologized for my failure in March to submit it.
I'm just asking, can we get that back? Can we get those next time, like, complete things?
Yes, they will, your, your, your packet for the December 6th meeting will include those documents.
Thank you.
But they, they will be the documents that were submitted in October of 2019. And so there won't be a, there won't be a, you won't know who wrote the applicant's narrative. That's what I'm trying to tell you. But it is the applicant's narrative.
That's good enough, knowing that it's not from city staff.
There won't be a date on it, on that document.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I call for a question?
Question's been called for. Alyssa, would you poll the council on this question of reopening the annexation, or, yeah, reopening the record for an annexation application, Jean Jones, 13601 Fernridge Road, to reopen the, a public hearing?
Yes, I can do that.
Go ahead, please.
Councillor Ort?
Yes.
Councillor McDonald?
Yes.
Councillor Patty?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay. Okay, good. Got that one done. Thank you. Communications from city staff?
We have nothing this evening, Mayor.
Communications from either myself or the rest of you? Anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can we talk about our open position on the council? Can we talk about our open position on the council?
Oh, yeah, applications for that, yeah. Anything? Alyssa?
Yeah, so that has been put out and advertised. The letters of interest are due by October 29th. I think I have that date right. And we've, I think, to date, received two, and so basically what we've put out is that the first review will happen on October 29th, and, but we'll keep accepting letters beyond that. And so, once I have, that date gets here, we'll get that together and figure out our next steps.
Are we going to have people come to the council like we did previously?
I, I believe so. I looked back at what we had done a couple of years ago with councillor McDonald, and I think we held a work session where we did a chance to ask the candidates' questions.
Thoughts and comments on that, any? Hopefully we'll get somebody.
Do we, I did have a comment from someone who was potentially interested. They were wanting to know, like, the letters of interest, like, are there any things, is there anything specific that they should put in there?
You know, I've seen over the years, many different, just like, a letter, I'm interested to going into a lot of detail of why they're interested, so I think it's really up to the person submitting.
There is an age and residence requirement, is there?
Yes, they do need to be a registered voter and live within the city limits. For, I believe it's for a year.
Okay, okay, so there are just a, a few basic requirements, yeah. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can we just get an, a update for the good of the public on city manager process and what we can just expect for that?
Sure, right now, so, right now, we are, myself and the department heads are reviewing the proposals from recruitment agencies that we've received, and we were hoping to have that for tonight, but it just didn't work out, and so we're going to be bringing those forward. Hopefully, the November 1st is the plan for your council consideration of appointing a recruitment agency. And that's, that's basically where we're at right now, is just giving all the department heads a chance to review those proposals that we've received.
Anything else? Items of general interest. Might as well go till 10 o'clock, or 9 o'clock, yeah, 10, why not 10? No, we need these three- and four-hour meetings, yes. Is there anything else? If not, I would like to go home. Okay, let's do it. Good night, thank you, folks.